Watched YouTube Live.
Okay, well, welcome. Thank you for being here. I guess you have a few issues that you want to talk to us about regarding your budget. If you'd like to start, that'd be fine. And then we can follow up with questions.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for having us here. Today, we're here to talk about a small budget expansion for the Office of Workforce Strategy. So we have proposed several full-time staff and interational staff. So our current office is myself, the Chief Workforce Officer, the Chief of Staff, who's Niall Damondo, who's on this call. We have a Workforce Development Specialist and a Diversity Equity and Inclusion and Strategic Partners Director. So currently, our office is four, four full-time staff. Our budget in the line item is $250,000. And then the rest of the funding for our office comes out of a $500,000 OIA allocation from the Governor's Reserve. And the, the majority of those funds cover our salaries. The funding that comes out of OIA has to pay salaries and fringe. So we are proposing to expand one additional full-time staff. This person would work with our Governor's Workforce Council and our five, or excuse me, our, our currently eight regional sector partnerships, which is where we convene our industry partners in the work that we're doing for workforce development. And this person would be a director at a maximum salary of 120,000. We're also proposing a durational staff for a comms, communications and legislative director at approximately $100,000 in the budget. And then also a durational fellow that would work with us on the infrastructure workforce development planning that is going to be coming down with the large infrastructure allocation from the, from the feds. So that is, the total request is another $420,000. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Hey, does any, any questions? So we got started, we just got a presentation talking about the additional positions that are mentioned in the budget. It's giving a better, a fuller explanation who they are and why they are needed. We just see if we had any questions.
I think Senator Austin has a question, Representative Ryan.
Is, are we allowing her to speak up?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Kelly, I have a couple of different questions. One relative to the the information that you gave us a little bit ago on the social venture partner group. Do you have a memorandum of understanding with that group?
We are, we do not currently have a memorandum of understanding. We are working with them on a volunteer basis.
So what is the, what are the duties that they have? Can you get, send us a list of what the duties are that they have? How are you working with them? How are they being compensated? Do they get to recommend what groups that we work with? Are they deciding the training? I don't understand how the, what the volunteer rule is.
Sure, I can give you a brief overview of some of the initiatives that they're, that they're working with us on. So for example, the healthcare conversation that we're having. Several of the social venture partners have been engaged with the hospital systems to get a fuller understanding of the workforce development needs that they have and the types of training programs that they have. So that we understand what training goes to where the demand is and what the training that we should be working on, the programs that will match up to their demand. We're also having some, they're also having conversations with some of the nursing associations on making sure that we're understanding that the, the programming matches the needs of the employers. We're also having some conversations led by, by myself and our office, but include some of the social venture partners with the Office of Public Health in that there are some mismatches in the way that they're stacked. The credentials don't stack, so a CNA cannot become an LPN and cannot become an RN. Each of them would have to start all over again. So say someone has been working in the healthcare industry for 10 years as a CNA. None of that experience would be transferable to the next level of certification that they would need. So we're just starting to have some conversations with the Public Health Department and CSU on programs that we could stack those credentials and experiences. So people have a more streamlined ability to move up within the healthcare ladder.
So this reminds me very much of the Dalio situation that we had relative to education that we were doing. And it doesn't appear to have a lot of transparency. Quite frankly, and all due respect, I'm sure that they're great people and I'm sure that they are doing wonderful things. But I'm really very concerned about this arrangement that we have that is neither in writing nor has any way to track it. And I want to, you know, so I would have a number of different questions relative to the social venture partners. The conversations that they're having with the hospitals and healthcare systems. Who is monitoring those conversations and how are we tracking those conversations? If nothing is in writing and nothing is being tracked, how is that happening? That would be question number one. Question number two is when you're looking at licensure relative to what you were just talking about with CNA going to an LPN, going to an RN. Who is having those conversations and how are those conversations happening? But again, we, we can't track any of that because you have this loose affiliation with a group of people who are not affiliated with government. And this is exactly what happened with Dalio. We ended up with a huge problem with Dalio. Not that Mr. Dalio is not a wonderful person and does a lot of really good things relative to, you know, how he and his organization fund things. I'm, I'm not complaining about that. But when we're being asked to support the Office of Workforce Strategy and the Office of Workforce Strategy has an agreement of what appears to be just a verbal agreement with the social venture partners. I think that that's going to be a problem moving forward. And I'm very, very concerned that that's something that is going on because it doesn't provide any sort of transparency. And that is something that I, I'd really like to, to get down to the bottom of.
Senator Austin, could I just make one comment before you, you go to the, I just want to mention, we, we are, we are actively working with OPM and SVP to draft a written document outlining the scope of services that SVP is currently providing. So just, I know there is not something like that, that currently exists, but we, we heard you on the last call and we are actively working on putting that together. So we will, it should be ready relatively soon, but just know we are working on that.
But know that, that the fact is, is that this has been going on for several months. This is not a new agreement that you have with SVP. It's been probably closer to a year or longer since the Office of Workforce Strategy came into existence. And many of the people, the social venture partners are board members of the Office of Workforce Strategy. And that, again, I, I'd like to know exactly what they have done so far. I'm very interested in seeing a copy of that memorandum of understanding. And I really want to say out loud again, that this is, this is not transparent. And this is something that we are being held accountable for over and over again. This reminds me very much of Dalio. And because there's nothing in writing and nothing has been tracked, there is no way for anybody to FOI documents because you don't have any documents to FOI. So I just want to put that out there. Going back to the positions, can, can you provide us with the number of positions in the Office of Workforce Strategy that are being paid for by the state and the salary ranges of those positions? That would be very helpful. So that we understand what's going on with that. And if, my last question, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for your indulgence, is relative to the the types of training that are happening through the Office of Workforce Strategy with the $70 million. So for example, CDL training, a job skill that we need drastically in the state of Connecticut, not just in the state of Connecticut, but nationally. There's a very good program on the New York State website relative to their DOT. Are we going to be able to put some of these other blue collar jobs that it's not just about the financial jobs and the higher paying jobs? But what are we doing for these jobs that we need that are just basic jobs? And that are, are really going to help us and provide a middle-class life. They don't, they might not provide some of the higher paying jobs that the financial industry or the tech industry does, but they certainly provide us with jobs that we need to have staff. So those would be my, those are actually three questions. I went one over and I apologize for that. So next time you come, if we could get that information and the information on SVP, I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to quickly state that it's never been our intention not to be transparent in our work. We just kind of, I was not familiar with what had happened with Dalio in the past. And so we will provide that information to you.
I'm not criticizing anybody. I'm just saying where I am with this issue. I'm not, I'm not saying that any, even anybody else is there. That's where I am with this issue. So I just, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying we need to figure this out. Thank you.
And, and Senator, if I could just make one, one last comment, we, we did send a a slide or two over to the Approves Committee in advance of this. So if you, and it highlights staff positions, salaries. So if you have any questions on that, please just let us know. We're happy to have a follow-up conversation on that, on that particular piece.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Yes, we did get the slide. And I mean, it's a small enough group. I think a couple of extra questions, questions, especially when we're getting information like you were able to derive from the questions you asked is good. So I, I have a quick question before I call on Representatives of Sawistowski. You made a statement about folks can't be, like an LPM, a CA can't become an LPM, an LPM can't become an RN. When you said that, who is saying that cannot happen? Because I think in most categories of education, they allow that to happen. Is it the, the, the SVP that's not allowing that to happen? Can you just explain that a little better? Because that confused me a little bit.
It's, it's part of the state certification process. So when you become a CNA, you have to do so many clinical hours and take a certain, take a certain course and get a certification. To become an, an LPN, you have to do the same, but the requirements are separate. So you can't take the clinical experience that you've had as a CNA and apply that to the number of clinical hours that you need to take for an LPN and so forth. It's the same thing that goes to an RN. So in each one of those paths, you have to start from ground zero. You can't take the previous experience you have and apply it to the next certification. So that is a, is an issue within the requirements and the regulations that needs to be sorted through to determine what can we and can't we do to streamline that, to be able to carry those we, we call stacking credentials from experiences from one to bring that forward to the next certification.
Okay. So what you're saying is that's the way it exists now. You'd like to change that so that it could, because I can remember, I'll admit this was a little while ago. Where I went to school was, there was a nursing school that allowed you to become an LPM after two years so that people could then go work and then continue to become an RN. So that you did have that process and it seemed to work very effectively, giving people additional experience. Okay. So it's good to hear that. What you're going to try and do is correct that. That's good to hear. Thank you. Okay, Representative Sawistowski, I'm sorry, didn't mean to hold you up, but if you could have any questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I mean, I got in here a couple of minutes late, so I missed a little bit about social venture partners. It's, what I picked up is social venture, venture partners is actually doing this on a volunteer basis. My question is, you know, how long can they do this? How can they be sustainable if they're doing this on a volunteer basis? And who, you know, where, where is the funding for this group coming from?
So we have some information that we can forward to you regarding social venture partners, but they are an organization of philanthropic and volunteers from all, all over Connecticut. And they have an interest in volunteering their time and experience to addressing the skills gap and the education gap and providing some, providing the ability for people to move up in the social ladder. So, and, and gain that education that they need to. So their whole organization is based on philanthropy and volunteerism. So they, they've been our chair, Mark Argash of the Governor's Workforce Council is currently the Executive Director of Social Venture Partners. He is the only one from Social Venture Partners that is on our council. He was a, he was a volunteer prior to becoming Chair of the Council. And so he was elected or appointed to take over from the past chair.
Thank, thank you. And I really appreciate the spirit of volunteerism and, and think that, you know, it's, it's a great idea with people who have something to offer to be able to, to go ahead and offer it. But presumably this must have some overhead costs or, I mean, if you're going to have an executive director, I imagine he's probably getting some kind of pay. Who is actually funding the overall umbrella organization? I had heard something about Bank of America being involved. Could you just elaborate a little bit on how, how the organization is funded?
Sure. Yeah, Representative, that's a good question. So a couple, a couple of just, I think, points to emphasize. So social venture partners, they are a do, their members pay dues. I'm not sure if it's annually, semi-annually. I'm not sure, but I believe that is what's contributing to any overhead cost. They only have, I think, three or four paid staff as part of the organization. I, I believe most of which is covered through the dues that are paid by members. The members, the volunteers that Kelly's mentioning, none of them are actually getting paid through this. This is all part of a sunset kind of career for them. They're, most of them are all retired individuals who are just doing this in their spare time. So no one is paying them to do their work. Really, the only costs are overhead of, you know, a facility and one or two, or a few, I think, less than, less than five staff members. The Bank of America relationship is a new grant that was just provided to cover two new durational resources for social venture partners who will be partnering with our office to deliver or to support our workforce development programs across healthcare and across IT. So that Bank of America grant was very specific to workforce because workforce is not the only portfolio that social venture port, partners covers. They work a lot in childcare, economic development, racial equity. They have a racial equity fund that they've recently kicked off. So they're doing a lot of things across the state, but workforce is kind of a sliver of, of that portfolio that again is covered very specifically, those two resources through the Bank of America grant. But that is not a larger funding mechanism for social venture partners writ large. The, the main overhead costs are covered through ongoing dues paid by the members, I believe.
Thank you for that. And it would be really interesting to get some details, the requirements of that grant as well when we next meet. Just to get an understanding of what is expected of SVP by, by Bank of America. And you're telling me that the members of this organization are the same as the volunteers. So the volunteers are not only volunteering their time, but they're paying dues to support the organization?
I think it's a case-by-case basis. I'm not sure that every volunteer is a paying member. That's something that we can circle back and confirm with you, but that is my understanding.
Are there outside memberships as well, like corporate memberships?
That I'm not sure about, but we can, we can follow up and, and make sure we get you an answer to that.
Thank you. And along the lines of Senator Austin, I mean, I, I really think we need to spend a little bit more time finding out more about SVP and what its role is and what the expected role is. So I do appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. Just a clarification again. Is SVP statewide or are they localized in particular areas of the state? Or do they, you have implied that they were kind of broad and did go across the state, but I just want to kind of confirm that.
They, they are, they provide services across the state. They have one office space located in Westport. It is a very small office space, but that, that is, they, no one really, it's, it's not a heavily used space. Most of the services they're delivering are, are virtually. And, you know, across regional, regional lines, but that is their one physical space.
And I do believe social venture partners is, is a national organization that has state, state charters. And I don't think that they, we, we've never experienced any hierarchy to a national organization, but I do believe that they are in multiple states.
I guess to get the gist of the questions here about SVP, I think we want, you know, really some firm information about who they are, how they're funded to kind of be more comfortable with dealing with them, obviously, for which is the questions you've seen here today. Do we have any other questions? Senator Anwar, you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to clarify, I, I would expect that the Governor's Workforce Council minutes would be public, right? I've not looked for them. Okay. So, and, and do you think that the minutes and some of that would have the information about when this relationship had some kind of a formalization, if you will?
I would say if you're looking for some type of a formal, it would probably be when Mark Argash became Chair of the Governor's Workforce Council. And that happened in October of 2020. Right? Did I get the year right, Niall?
Yeah, just a clarifying question, maybe. Are you referring to the Bank of America grant, a formalization of that or a formalization of the relationship between SVP and our Office of Workforce Strategy?
SVP and, and the workforce strategies.
Okay. Yep. I don't know that there was a formal declaration of that, but they have been involved as, again, from a volunteer capacity when the Governor's Workforce Council was formed via executive order in November 2019. So they were actually participating members in drafting the statewide strategic plan that was developed. That was really the first capacity that the state engaged social venture partners in when it comes to workforce. So I don't believe there was, you know, a formal documented meeting minute of that happening, but we can try to track down some initial documentation that can help just outline when, when the support started. And then, you know, what, again, to Senator Austin's point, they have been providing support to the workforce system writ large. So we can, I think we can easily pull together some materials that highlight the support that they've been providing up to this point before this recent Bank of America grant and, and when that support started to your, to your point.
Can I clarify something? I, I'm not sure if the Governor's Workforce Council was set up by an executive order.
Yes, it was.
Executive order. Was back, but that was back in October 2019.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So it's, it's not part of the urgency. It's, it's just a prior to the pandemic situation. Okay. And, and is there a governance? Do the people elect the chair or it's the appointed chair?
The chair is appointed by the governor.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for answering. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other questions from any other members of the committee? Subcommittee. Very nice. Okay. So I think you have some work cut off for you, getting some more information. So our comfort level has increased a little bit, uh, increased. And we'll look forward to seeing you again. Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care. Susan, are you back?
I am. I just, Secretary of State and Scott Bates have just joined us.
Oh, we're not doing, we're not doing FOI in between?
No, FOI is between
My live.
You are.
Yeah, we can hear everything you're saying, Madam Secretary. So be careful. And I think we're ready when you're ready. Who's, she's now turned her back to us. Okay. Mr. Bates, can you make the secretary aware that we're ready to speak with her and get that other woman out of the way?
Yes, sir.
Madam Secretary, good to see you.
She knows she's on you.
And who has the authority? That's the other question.
Madam Secretary?
Here I am. Okay. Good afternoon. I was kind of waiting to be let in and then I realized I was in.
Yeah, we've been watching you for a while now.
Oh, great.
So whenever you're ready, ma'am.
Oh, I am ready. Okay. So, good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see you all. We are here to discuss the two items that we requested in the budget beyond our original budget. And I was asked a couple of questions about it at the big meeting. I don't want to go further than that, but the two items were an election information security analyst, 150,000. And all I'll say about that is that the invasion of Ukraine has made that even more important. Just got off a, a large national meeting with the FBI and several other security agencies and emphasizing the fact that this will be even more important going forward as they're already getting a lot of information about what's going on with Russia's interference and continued action around our elections. So the question I was asked during the big meeting was the, about the $2 million to run a comprehensive voter education program. I did submit to you a budget for that program along with some of the things that were done in 2020 that show you the kind of imagery we were using, the kind of voter education campaign we ran. And I will just say again, for me, I think it was the most important thing we did during the voter, during the 2020 election to inform voters about exactly how to do the voting during COVID in particular. Now, obviously, if you look at the budget, you'll see it's mostly for media, streaming radio, TV, social media, web-based media, mobile media. So, and it's broken out by television, radio and print in both English and Spanish. And again, the effort is to reach the broadest audience possible to make sure people understand how they are to vote in this election. Now, this, of course, will be delicate to track because there's still a chance that the legislature may act to make changes. But at this point, we would have to develop a campaign to make sure people understand that the eligibility for absentee ballots, for example, has gone back to the way it was before COVID. So that, for me, is a big concern because I think there's a lot of confusion out there about exactly, you know, who's eligible, how that all works. But also to make sure that people know how to track their ballot. We will have new tools this year, for example, that'll make it easier for people who are using absentee ballots to track them. We will have a newly developed system to be able to apply for an absentee ballot online, certainly by the general election. So those are things we need to let people know about. And I, I think it really, for me, contributed greatly to the smoothness of the 2020 election. And so I think this is very, very important this year of all years. It is a one-time request at this point. Just because there will be changes and, and people are, I believe, kind of confused about all this. So, and you can see the, the icons, the, the whole creative things that we developed for the last campaign. Yes, some of them we can reuse, of course, depending on if there are further changes. And if we go back to some sort of COVID-related difference in the way people are able to get absentee ballots, we, we'd have to adjust this depending on what the legislature does or doesn't do during the session. So can I, I'll, I'll just stop there and see if there's any more questions about anything we've submitted. How's that?
I have a question. The document you said, did you send it to Sue? To distribute to us?
I believe so.
Okay, I'm just not finding it. Maybe it just, maybe I'm trying.
Okay. Can I hold? It looks like this.
Oh, yeah.
Kevin, it was a February seventeenth email. That helps you find it.
I went through everything. I didn't see. Well, I'll find find it later. I can never find stuff on a mobile phone, but we have it, so that's good.
Okay.
And I see that Representative Dash, Dathan has a question. Representative?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and um, nice to see you, Secretary Merrill. Um, so two questions I had, um, just while I had you on the phone are on the call. With the the uh, ballot absentee ballot drop boxes, are we going to be able to continue to use those going forward? And have there been any issues with um, those ballot boxes um, in our state?
Uh, they were made permanent by the legislature last year, so they are a permanent structure now in our uh, elections, which I think is great. Uh, they were very, very much appreciated uh, in twenty twenty by many voters. Uh, and that is another reason that we need to advertise their use. Um, problems, um, you know, it was a first time use, so um, we had to do a lot of education to people about it and to the towns. Uh, there were some towns that um, we had to work with in terms of placement of those drop boxes to make sure they were easily accessible to voters. And um, the only other problem I remember coming up was uh, something that was brought up during one of the hearings, which was one of the towns. Uh, the drop boxes, there were pictures of them overflowing. Well, what happened was they shut them down on Election Day, and there were still people trying to put ballots into the drop box after Election Day. And so, of course, they were overflowing because they were locked. Uh, but as far as I know, uh, the procedure itself went very, very well. The town clerks uh, really appreciated them. Um, and so um, I think it went relatively well considering it was a first time use.
Thank you very much. I know I've had a few people ask me that question, and I thought we did make them permanent, but I did want to double check. Um, my second question really is probably um not specifically on things that you've talked about today, but it is more of a worrying thing when we see what what's happening in Ukraine and Russia and um, you know, hearing anecdotally that um, there are um big concerns about uh, hacking, um, particularly coming out of Russia as a retaliation for uh, additional sanctions that were um, raised this weekend. And I just wanted to find out, I know we've invested in quite a lot of software in the last couple of years, and I was hoping that you could just spend a minute um, talking to the committee about um, one, how are we keeping our um, records safe, voter rec- records safe in our state um, to prevent hacking on um, our constituents? As well as, you know, our business portal that I talked to you last time about that I'm really interested in. So if you could spend a minute talking about that, I greatly appreciate it.
Yes, uh, you are very right to be concerned, uh, Representative Dathan, because uh, I, as I said, I just got off a a national call uh, with the National Secretaries of State, and there is very much evidence that uh, Russia will continue its efforts to provide mostly misinformation to the public. They're trying to sow discord in the American public, and it's kind of working, I have to say. Uh, and it will ramp up even more as they become more and more uh, convinced that their invasion is not going as well as they planned at the moment. And I I think one security expert put it in a wonderful way, which really sunk in for me when he said, you know, it's a lot cheaper to do um, cybersecurity kinds of attacks than it is to build uh, uh airplane, one airplane is like a billion dollars where you can do a lot of damage uh, through the internet with with cybersecurity attacks. Um, I would just remind everyone, yeah, we were um, in twenty sixteen. Um, did sustain some, there was some meddling trying to go on. The only thing we really have online that anyone should be concerned about is the voter file, and that is not on a major line. It is on a protected system. The the primary concern we have would be at the local level because every single registrar and clerk who has access to that system needs to be doing the things that we put in place since twenty sixteen, you know, dual authentication, change your passwords. It's really simple things that make a difference, and they reiterated that on this call. If you're using the best practices and everybody's providing those protections, and we are doing training routinely with all the local election officials on this point. Uh, you should be able to counteract many of those attacks. We were never breached in our state that we know of, and we have been tracking it. I now have a person in my IT division that does track the kinds of things they're looking for nationally and has reported a few things to the National FBI and DHS. So uh, we in Connecticut have done a lot. We have these Albert sensors. They call, I I'll spare you the 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 details on IT. I've learned a lot about it myself, but we are using all those best practices. We work routinely with the national security people and the national IT, and we along with the IT uh, department itself, the state IT uh, are working all the time to make sure we're all in close communication because that turns out to be very, very important in national defense.
Okay, thank you so much, and hopefully we can get the message out to folks to be sensible, uh, ensure that they uh, change their passwords, don't share them. Um, and do all the security things. So uh, we appreciate your work, and um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
If we could get back to budgetary items and stay on track to make sure we get through all that before the end of this session, that would be good. So Senator Anwar, do you have a question about the budget?
Yes, I do. I I just wanted to clarify. It is my understanding that the two million dollars, Secretary, that uh, your office has requested is primarily for information and and it does not include the IT security, even though the headline talks about IT security being part of it, but the details don't suggest that.
No, it is a media campaign to inform voters of how to vote using some of those tools, but nothing to do with security. No. It's it's really about how to you, how to vote, how to do it the way with the changes in the law, with the ballot boxes, and it's using little icons basically to get out there in the public in a simple way to make sure people understand how to vote like this.
Be- because the headlines suggest that you're looking at carry forward election IT security and public education campaign, but it's all about public education campaign. It doesn't talk as much about the IT security in in the the two million dollars and and the thought was with the current situation, and obviously, your budget was prior to the the situation that it's happening in the world right now. Do you think it's important to realign some of this uh, uh, with the new threats that are around the corner?
Uh, that would spill into us uh, talking about misinformation and disinformation as a public campaign, and that's extremely difficult for us to do because of uh issues surrounding freedom of speech and, you know, us making judgments about what's miss or disinformation. We can certainly, we report things that we see that are clearly coming from foreign uh, foreign bots, which there's a lot of that, but also domestic terrorists. And uh, you know, I would just say I don't think it's our role to do that. Honestly, we are we are the mechanism of elections. We make sure people know how to vote, how the mechanisms work. Um, and how, what their rights are, basically, what their obligations are, or, you know, how you can use the new drop boxes and so forth. And it's a, it's an interesting question. Uh, we have not aligned this to the, we think that public information is where we should be.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Representatives, I was telling.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I I um, just got, uh, it was forwarded to me the uh, information that um Secretary Merrill had sent. I could not locate it in my email, uh, but it did get forwarded to me. A lot of this focuses on the results, but not the numbers, the actual costs. What actually makes up the two million dollars? Um, I'm just, it's it's a lot of money um, for something, for going back to a practice that we had just a couple of years ago. Um, people know where their polling places are in general. Um, you know, I I I, it it is a lot of money, and I just don't have a sense here uh, from what was submitted that we know actually what those costs are. How how were, how was the two million dollars um, actually um, put together?
Do you, uh, Representative, do you have the budget in front of you that we submitted for the two million dollars? Because it's broken down by digital media, television, radio, print. And as you can see from the budget, uh, very little of that is spent on planning oversight strategy reporting and analysis, which is the 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 sort of administrative piece. It's almost all media and a large degree uh, of it is television because television is expensive.
Yeah, I I actually, what what I have in front of me is I have the budget book, which just gives a flat two million dollars without any breakdown. And then I have the uh, presentation that was sent out on February seventeenth, and I'm really not, is there something else that has actual numbers in it?
Yes, looks like this. I don't know if you can see this. Where it has a breakdown.
Was it part of, was it part of that um, the submission, what you submitted? Because I'd, I'm seeing four attachments.
I'm told we sent it out Friday, but it was submitted, but maybe not.
I I have not, I have not actually seen that. I would be really interested in getting more, you know, I said, rather than just a lump sum of two million dollars, I'd like to.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, what that goes into.
Yeah, you'll get that. The detailed budget was sent Friday, I guess, and
Okay.
We're happy to send it to you again.
Okay, well, if 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 Madam Ministerator has sent it out, uh, it may, it may actually be in my inbox, but it is appropriations. I've been getting a lot of email.
It would be really help, it would be really helpful to me if it was resent. I did not see it on Friday, but I have over a hundred unread emails at this stage of the game, so Denise, if Madam Secretary, if someone from your office can resend it, I'll get it right out to.
Oh, yes. Absolutely, we'll send it right now.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And one, one last question too. Um, the funding to combat election misinformation, is that, that's actually a job?
Yes, it is.
And what what does that job do?
Uh, that job monitors missing disinformation on the web, reports to our national um national partners um, and basically monitors what's going on and tries to keep up with what SISA is telling us we should be doing, looking for these things. SISA is the national organization under the Department of Homeland Security with whom we're working to uh, work on these things, and then that job would also alert us to what we should be telling our local partners.
And what what kind of misinformation would that be looking for or looking at? Um, would that be like for polling places or what what kind of misinformation?
Exactly. Yeah, we did have some of that last time, but yes, uh, disinformation about uh, real-time issues where they're giving voters misinformation about where they vote, how they vote. Uh, nothing about candidates, none of that is not our aim. It is just to make sure that the elections go smoothly and that people aren't believing things like the election machines were uh, were actually part of some great conspiracy theory that our election machines were uh, manufactured by Dominion, and that became a big eh, uh, event last year. It turns out our election machines are not manufactured by Dominion, for example. So it really revolves around election administration issues.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Powell, it seems you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, good afternoon, Secretary. I'm sorry, I have three meetings going, so if you address this already, I apologize. Um, the, are there other states taking the same initiative and hiring somebody to monitor those things? Because as as I'm sure you know, and I, listen, I'm no stranger to the fact that misinformation gets out there, and you know, it's unfortunately um, in today's world, you know, anybody with a keyboard, internet connection has the test ability to put information out, but um, are there other states doing that? Um, it seems like, you know, perhaps it should be more of a federal initiative. Do you know?
Uh, yes, other states are hiring misinformation people uh, at the urging of the federal government. Last year, we actually did have temporary funds to do this, and that's, you know, where we got the idea sort of. So um, but, you know, federal government doesn't generally fund much of elections. Uh, it's really funded largely at the local level. In fact, the state does very little to fund elections. So this is uh, something that just has emerged since the mid twenty twenty sixteen, really was the first time we had to start dealing with cybersecurity. I think it's critically important. Many states are going this direction because we are under attack, and there's no doubt about it, and we can't, we don't have the capacity to deal with it uh, without some sort of position doing this, and we experienced it last year. It worked very well.
Uh, Representative, in particular, Colorado and California have personnel, and more states are picking them up as we go, and we did have a temporary contractor last cycle. And, you know, we did get some reports that we passed on to, you know, federal partners that were uh, election administration misinformation in particular.
Thanks, I appreciate it. You give it up, what I'm basically driving at is, I mean, in order for for there to, for this to work, in my opinion, effectively, it would have to be done pretty much in every state, right? Because, I mean, the internet, the internet doesn't know, and that's what we're talking about. Let's face it, right? The internet doesn't know state lines, right? So it, whereas, you know, our police officers, for example, can enforce laws on the road, et cetera, within state boundaries, the internet knows no such boundaries, so. Um, it it's good to know, thank you, Mr. Deputy, that that um, that other states are are taking that initiative too. I hate to see the the taxpayers in Connecticut bear the burden as the the primary reporting agency for their federal government. So thank you for that answer, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, and in particular, um, because it's a great question, uh, we focus on Connecticut specific, so. So that's the focus. It's not kind of the broad net of everything coming at the US, but in fact, somebody saying, oh, ballots are all over the road on I ninety-one in Windsor, you know, we saw something like that last cycle, somebody.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
You said, yes, ma'am.
Um, our wonderful analyst from OFA, Lauren Goulet, has forwarded that the information from the Secretary of the State's office to me, and I've just sent it out to the subcommittee, so it should be in everybody's inbox.
Great, that's going to be really helpful. I appreciate it. I got nervous when I saw you, your face appeared, that something terrible had happened. Okay. So that's good. Okay, um, do we have any other questions for the Secretary of State? I'm glad we'll get that information. I think it's going to be incredibly helpful too. Do we have any other questions from members of the committee? Well, thank you. Thank you for your explanation, helping us through your part of the budget and the additional information. And I think as we have a chance to look at that, we'll be able to come back to you if we have any additional questions after looking at that. Uh, Representative Walker has shown up. Do you have a question before we get rid of the Secretary of State?
Get rid of? Okay.
Representative Ryan, yes.
As long as we took care of the the um, uh, the uh, the the two million dollars for the uh, protection, I'm good.
Yeah, we did have plenty of discussion about that, a lot of good questions.
Good.
She sent us some information that's going to be helpful, hopefully, you as well.
Thank you. I just, I'll I'll just listen.
I think we might be done. Um, a- any other questions for anyone? Again, thank you, Madam Secretary.
Thank you for your support over all these years, and I just want to weigh in on that, since this will probably be my last subcommittee meeting, so, oh, well.
So so is is that a tear of happiness or a tear of sadness?
Yeah, to be honest, it's kind of both.
I know. It's the happiness. You can go ahead and say it. Good to see you, Denise.
You too.
Thank you for everything. Thank you. Thank you, and it looks like we have the folks from the FOI present already, so we can begin with Colleen, Ms. Murphy. If you would like to begin, that'd be good.
Sure, thank you, and I think I'll be the only one presenting, although my colleagues are on as well, but hi, everyone. Colleen Murphy, the Executive Director and General Counsel of the FOI Commission. And uh, thank you very much for just indulging me for a couple of minutes today on a matter of importance to the FOI Commission. Um, the commission has a pass-through budgetary provision in its statute. It's contained in one dash two oh five A, and it says that the recommended adjustments um, submitted by the Executive Director of the FOI Co- Commission shall be the adjustments transmitted to all of you. We do uh, provide our budget to the Governor's Office, but it's intended to be a pass-through, and we've had an issue uh, many, many years going now where we'll put in a budget option as we did this year, and our option doesn't make it to you all. What you have in the Governor's Budget Bill, you do have a line item that shows what the commission asked for, but in the supporting documentation put forward in the budget books, it doesn't have the recommended adjustment. So the governor did not put that recommendation through. We think as a, as a big picture issue, that's that's a big problem, and we have to address that with the powers that be there, that our budget isn't passing. And we have to address that with the powers that be there, that our budget isn't passing through directly to you. But specifically for today, I wanted to make sure that you knew that we had put in an option. Our request is 99,513 over what has been allotted to us thus far. And that represents funding to fill an already existing position in our office, but to fill it with a staff attorney two level. And the Commission put this through for, really, three, three reasons. One is the complexity of our cases that we've had over these past several years. They involve a lot of in-camera, which are, you know, records that government basically wants to keep secret. And the Commission's job is to figure out whether that's appropriate under law. So we review thousands and thousands of these claimed to be confidential records and we determine whether they should be released or not. And as I said, the complexity of these cases over the years has gotten very, very high. I hate to say that we've decided all the easy issues, but, you know, we've been in existence over 45 years and a lot of the easy questions have been resolved. But now we've got very high complexity of our cases. In addition, we've added some responsibilities in the past few years to what the Commission has to do. One involves an issue that's near and dear to a lot of people's hearts, dealing with the vexatious requester. A few years back, the Legislature gave the Commission the authority to rule on petitions from agencies that claim to be vexed by redundant requesters or just sort of the over-the-top type person. And so we've had a number of petitions filed under that. They're very complex and time-consuming because it means taking away potentially somebody's right to file complaints with the FOI Commission. So that was an added responsibility, it's codified in our statute now. And then most recently during the pandemic, we now have electronic meetings by which we're all meeting today. And there are going to be a lot of rules about how those will operate under freedom of information. There already is a statute in place that is governing that. We expect that to be extended and probably elaborated on. And a lot of our questions today deal with those, which will be novel issues going forward. So that is why we put in this request. As I said, it is for just funding for an existing position. A number of years ago, we had to cut a couple of our attorney positions because we were severely cut. What we're looking to do is to recoup that position in terms of the funding for it. So again, I thank you for your time and indulging me today. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, I just have a quick one. Now, you said this money would build a position that already exists, so it doesn't change your general fund number permanent full-time position, it's still 16, or would it make it 17?
That would be 16, it's currently at 16 and would stay at 16.
That's what I just wanted to clarify, thank you. And our good friend, Representative Walker, has a question for you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was kind of going to ask the same thing that Representative Ryan asked. But so on book, you have 16 positions, but you right now only have 15 people?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and this position has been vacant for a while?
Right.
A couple of years, about three years?
Right, maybe even a little more. But right, the funding was taken away, but not the position. It, it did stay in our account, which we wanted to hold on to it and hope that someday we could get it back.
Okay, and right now, do you have any retirees that you are expecting to have in your agency?
We do, we do, yes, approximately one-third of our staff.
One-third?
Hiring, yes. Yes.
So, so five people are leaving?
Yes, one, let's see, one, actually, two have left already. And we're anticipating three more before July 1st.
Now, have you, have you filed for those positions?
We, the two that have been vacated, one is filled and one is, you know, posted and about to be filled, we hope. The other three, we're gearing up for at this time.
Okay, okay, all right. So you put in for a request for, for the positions?
Yes, yes.
And, and they've not, not said that they were going to fill it, they just haven't done anything yet?
Right, right.
When did you put the filings in for those positions?
Well, they're, I mean, they're just included in our budget. The people have not officially filed for their papers yet and they haven't left yet.
Oh, okay, all right.
By July 1.
So you have not, you have not had the experience of going through the HR system yet?
I'm not sure, what do you, what do you mean for that?
You're trying, trying to hire people to fill the spots?
The three that have not left yet, no. But the two that have, we are, we filled one and the other one, we're in the process of filling, we have it posted. And so we expect to be able to fill that one.
Okay, the one that you filled, was that from somebody else within the department or is somebody outside the department?
Somebody outside the department.
Okay, all right. Okay, yeah, we, we've been asking, we've been asking all the agencies as we meet with them, how many expected retirees and how many have put in requests for those positions to be filled? And, and how many have actually gotten them filled? That's been a real concern of ours because people have told us that it takes quite some time to fill those positions through the, the new HR system. So we're trying to just follow up with that to see if we can help of any way. So, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Do any of the other members of the committee have a question? Okay, well, thank you, thank you for bringing that to our attention and giving us the information. Can you give us something in writing describing the position? Just so as we go over this, we have a firm idea of what it is we're looking at.
Sure, I will, I believe, I mean, we submitted the option along with our testimony to the entire committee. So it should be cash flow, but happy to do that again if you need it.
No, okay, I didn't realize this, or maybe we haven't, I just didn't realize it was not in front of me. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
No other questions? I think we're, excuse me, I think we're good. Thank you.
They're coming in now.
Okay, are we in good shape? Is everybody in, that's going to be in? Looks like it.
I think so, David, David, you're, the board are all in, I believe. Al, I haven't seen Al yet, Al yet, but I think everybody else is here, David.
David's still looking, like he's still trying to connect.
Okay.
From what I can see.
Let me.
There he is, okay. Um, and who will be speaking for you folks? Lawrence Fox, okay, please, please begin.
Well, you know, we have our budget request in and you've got, has, has the Appropriations Committee seen that? You've, you've got that.
I think we started with your testimony from your previous presentation to us, yeah.
Okay, good. The only, I mean, I, I, the only thing I, I would add, just in view of almost the daily newspaper about issues around contracting going on now in our state. And, and I mentioned this in the testimony. I have even more concerns now that Scott Bates has been elevated to be Acting Secretary of OPM. He, he is on the public record, as I said last time, of, of saying, quote unquote, "We, we," he used the word "we." I don't know who he meant by "we," but he was speaking at least for OPM. Maybe, I don't know if he was speaking for the Governor. "We don't actually think they need to exist and we will continue to have that posture." And, and I raise it because, and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to be able to speak with GAE about this. There you, one of the, we have the tools in the statute mostly to, to really avoid the kind of stuff that's been going on. And, and, and we, and, but it, but we've never, and I say "we" as a state, we've never funded what we carried out. And I, I just want to point something out because OPM, in recent years, has been trying to erase us. And I'm going to use a very specific example. It used to be that the advice from OPM to all the contracting agencies, their written advice included a section that told contracting agencies that they should be telling, that, that in, when they, when they issue RFPs, they should be telling potential bidders that they have an ability to appeal an adverse decision to the Contracting Standards Board. They would put that information out. It was in the instructions for OPM to contracting agencies on what they should do, what contracting agencies should do. And in, in, in the last year and a half, they've taken that advice out. Nowhere in their advice to contracting agencies does it, does it tell them that they should be informing businesses, contractors, bidders, that they have appeal rights to the Contracting Standards Board? So we, so, so that's something we should just put in the statute. It shouldn't be optional. Because we, people can come to us, a small business can come to us, they don't have to hire lawyers. They can come to us and we will hear their appeal within 30, within, within 30 days we'll issue a decision. And, 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 and we have the ability in real time to tell a contracting agency, "Do the RFP over again. This is no good. You didn't follow the statute." So I, it's, I just give it as an example of both number one, the power of what's in the current statute, the tragedy of us not informing, because it's up to OPM right now to inform bidders of their rights. And, 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 and we, by the way, we hold these hearings. But the, but the problem is, most people that are bidding don't know that they have these appeal rights anymore. So we'll, we'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Your, your initial comment confused me because I thought Jeff Beckham was made the Executive Director of OPM. I, I didn't hear if Mr. Bates had moved over there, but.
No, he hasn't.
Okay, just to clarify that. And then the numbers you gave us for the positions that you would like reinstated, placed in your budget, are these the same numbers for last year? Did you take into contemplation and increase them by some modular amount? You didn't, okay, so you made, okay, good. Because I think, as you know, over the years, you've always had, at least as long as I've been on the Subcommittee or been to our support, I think you have the least resistance here, unless something changes tonight. Give me once, okay. So do we have questions from other members of the board, the other members of the Subcommittee, or Mr. Fox, or any of the members? Representative Walker?
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, for, for coming to talk to us. So, right now, you only have one employee, correct?
Correct.
That's David, right?
David, and he's retiring, by the way, he's retiring in June.
I know, everybody's retiring in June, are you guys retiring in June?
We serve at the pleasure of either you guys or the Governor, so.
It's mostly, it's mostly us, just, 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 just saying. So in looking at the best opportunity for you, you would say that you would like to have two or three people, one like an administrative assistant or something?
Well, the, the, the positions that we've asked for, one is in, one is, the Chief Procurement Officer is, is, is far and away the most important. And, and, and that's, that's in the statute. And it just hasn't been funded for several years. And that would give us the expertise, and I want to remind the board because sometimes some folks, not on this committee, have said, well, aren't you duplicating what DAS does? We don't do, our board doesn't do any procurement, we monitor the procurement. But having that Chief Procurement Officer would give that horsepower. We definitely need a staff attorney. Our experience has been that we most of, we, whenever we think we want legal advice and want assistance, we talk with the Attorney General. And sometimes the Attorney General assigns a staff attorney to work with us. Most times, the AG doesn't. And frankly, we, we could use a staff attorney for, to help us with our hearings. We also, if you look at the statute, there's lots of regulations that we can clarify. For example, we're supposed to define in regulation, what is an emergency that would qualify as, as suspending competitive bidding? We haven't ever had the staff to do that. But, so we need a staff attorney, we, we need an accounts examiner. That would be a, you know, that's like an auditor. And, and then a research analyst, because a lot of what we do is really to research what's going on and then we need a trainer. And for a while, I wondered, do we really need a trainer? OPM does that, but after I realized they're erasing us. They're not actually telling contracting agencies properly what, what. So we need to have training capacity at the, at the Contracting Standards Board. Those, those are the positions. And then, of course, we need to continue to fund the Executive Director.
So in, in, in trying to make the case for why you are important, give me three things why, why your, your agency is important?
First of all, we, we are actually nonpartisan. I happen to be a registered Democrat. It hasn't, I haven't hesitated for a moment about, we want procurement to be done right in this state and it doesn't matter the political, and, and you can't tell on our, our board, we have Democrats, we have Republicans, we have unaffiliated. It, it's, and, and it's people who really have extraordinarily distinguished careers and live in this state. And so it's, it, there might be a better idea, but it's a good idea. And, and just like a civilian review board, I mean, we're, we, we don't police. We, you know, the civilian review board doesn't actually do policing, but it's people that watch what's going on. We, we watch the procurement. This state, we've had a, we've, we've had a demonstration in real time of why we need to be able to do that. Secondly, under the law, this board has the authority to, to provide real-time remediation for abuses. That doesn't exist with the auditors, doesn't exist with anything else. So for, what do I mean by that? We can tell a contracting agency, "Do an RFP over again. It wasn't done properly." We can actually, with appropriate hearings, we, if a contracting agency continues to abuse or, or not correctly do bidding in this state, fair contracting, we, we can actually say, you know what, you're not going to do contracting anymore. We've worked with you, we've tried to make it better. So we have the ability to suspend a contractor from even bidding. So there's real, so why should, there are real tools in the toolbox that the legislature gave this board.
Okay.
To, to try to prevent, so, 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 and, 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 so those would be the main reasons.
Okay. I will, I will say something and, and I mean no offense to this, but I don't see any women on your board. Are there any women on your board?
No, and, and.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Lawrence.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I, 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 we, we do now, but, uh, we have, we have a lot, three women on the board, but we don't have any people of color on the board.
But that was my next one. We, we, we need, we need women and we need people of color on your board.
I, I want, I want, I want you to know that every time we have a vacancy, when we go to either the, the governor has a certain number of appointments and legislative leaders have certain number of appointments and we tell them that. We'd like to, we'd like to have people of color, women on the, women, women on the board. And, and it, we don't appoint, we're not self-appointed. So we rely on, on, you know, the political leadership, but you're right. And it's, it's a, it's a problem.
Yep. Yeah, we, 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 we can work on that. We can work on that. I think I, I know a few women and I may know a few of color too. So, so we can work on that. Well, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Senator Austin, you have a question?
Um, thank you very much. Um, mostly it's not really a question. Um, we were just listening to the Freedom of Information saying that, uh, their budget is required to be a pass through, not, uh, uh, not to be determined by the executive branch. And Representative Walker and I have been speaking with the, um, uh, lawyers from LCO and they're saying that there may be a conflict, as we have talked about before, moving it over to the legislative branch. On the, if you could, uh, send to us, I need it right now because Representative Walker asked a lot of the questions that I would have asked. Um, uh, what are the things that we can do to put guardrails around the organization? So that we are not arguing about less than $500,000 overall. Um, and that while your budget, the governor has your budget as $637,000 this next year, it does not include your positions. It includes those three additional positions of auditors is my understanding. And so I think that that's something that we have to pay attention to because I'm not certain that the auditors need those three positions. I have talked with them, they did not indicate that that was necessary to them. So while the dollar note is very clear, that's what we need. It is not, uh, it's not dedicated towards the positions that you have. So we need to pay attention to that. Um, and then, um, uh, uh, relative to, um, where, uh, I, I guess, I, I, I guess I, I just have to say out loud that I, this is just such a small amount of money that we need to take care of. But the policy behind this contracting standards board is a very necessary policy based on the amount of money that goes out to contracts and procurement. Um, thank you for your tenacity. Uh, thank you very much. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Well said. All right. Um, Representative Wilson, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good to see you there today. Larry, here we are again. You know, I think I've been a voice supporting you, um, from when I heard your very first presentation. I can't even remember when it was. Um, and I, and I enjoyed today your explanation about the party affiliations of the members of your board. And to me, it speaks to a question of, um, ethics, not questioning your ethics, but just realizing that you feel so strongly about what you do. It, it leads me to believe that you have, and your board members have a very high ethical sense. Um, and as I sit here and listen over and over and over to this, it, it just, to me begs the question of why are you being treated this way? And if in fact, um, uh, we were in a whistleblower situation, um, would you and your board feel like you're a whistleblower being stifled?
Well, you know, the, 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 the issue of, of funding has, has, I mean, David, there's some people that have been on the board longer than I have. It's, it's, the, the board has never had the funding that, that, that was initially envisioned. And so I think it's, it's not, it's not, uh, I'm, I'm used to from my other professional life, I've done a lot of, I'm retired now, but a lot of consulting and a lot, and, and, and as a father member, it's not unusual to build into a system, different pieces that are going to have a natural tension with one another. And, 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 uh, I, I, and, you know, we understand our role at the board. We just understand what it is. Like, for example, it's not us to, up to us to decide whether something was a good idea or a bad idea as economic development or anything else. That's not our lane, you know? When we've been dealing with the Connecticut Port Authority, some people that have complaints liked the development, some, actually, it, that's not the issue for us. It's not up for, it's not up to us to decide the economic policy. It's up to us, was the procurement done right? Did people follow the rules? Was it fair? Was it transparent? And we have never had any close votes on our board. None of our votes, uh, uh, about undertaking these things have been split. So occasionally some person will have doubts, but it's not about party affiliation. The board really, it, you know, we, we, we all live in the state and we say, well, does this seem right? And, 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 uh, and when we think it's not right, but the statute isn't clear, we, we come to you and we say, maybe we ought to clarify this statute. Um, but, but, uh, you know, I, I, you know, I, I think that the, what I found, for example, in the recent stuff that's going on with, with, with some of the contracting on school construction. It's not, you know, we don't have right now, um, the jurisdiction over municipal construction where the contracting agencies and municipality. We do have jurisdiction over the behavior of state people who are working on those contracts. That's in our jurisdiction and, 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 but it's interesting to me that if, if, if I'm over at OPM or DAS, I'm trying to implement the governor's program. And, and I'm trying to defend my boss, whoever that boss happens to be. And, and we have a different mission. We're trying to defend the integrity of the procurement systems in the state. And so there is a tension that's going to exist, which I think is fine. It, it, it's, 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 it's fine to have that tension. But I think that, that administrations in the executive branch have often seen us as a pain in the ass. And, 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 and they thought that by not funding us, we would be less of a pain in the neck. And, and what's happened in the last few years is that our, 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 our board members have just stepped up and been willing to do the work that would normally be done by staff. And that's the only reason that we get anything done, with all due respect to David. I mean, David actually has been the primary mover of saying, you know, we could do this if we can do it ourselves. And, 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 and so when he retires, um, the board, the board is not a, I mean, we, if we don't fill the, yeah, and, and the executive director, the board is functionally done and, 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 uh, but we need, we can't, we can't count on the next executive director having all the experience that he's had. He's, he's an extraordinary individual, but our board members, we have, we have, I mean, when, you know, for me to have read in the newspaper, I'm sorry, I'm going on, well, the board is unprofessional. If you look at the resumes of the people that are on this board, the weakest resume is me. I mean, we have outstanding, we have outstanding people on this board who have made a career, town managers, uh, procurement, uh, uh, civil engineers, real estate, uh, uh, state, uh, state, state government at the highest levels. Uh, legis, a retired legislator, I mean, they're, uh, the top, some of the top, uh, union leaders from, from the state. Some people say, well, this is dominated by the unions. Actually, two, eight, eight out of, eight out of 13 people on the board right now have absolutely no union affiliation. Uh, but, but actually I think it's good that working people have someone on this board to look after all the money that's being spent. But, you know, to have had the president of the FLCIO, for example, as an example on the board, that's, these are outstanding leaders from our community. Um, and, and, uh, but, but, you know, I get it. A governor's trying to get something done and they think that maybe we're gonna, we're gonna stand in the way. But I, I mean, I have a good relationship with the governor. Um, I have, I, I had a good relationship, I thought, with, uh, Melissa McCaw. I didn't have a relationship with Josh Dival. He just, he, 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 we just never developed one. But there's a tension, there's a tension in those relationships. And I happen to believe it's important to, to, you know, I used to work in state government years ago. I worked in the O'Neill administration and I worked in the, in the Wecker administration. And I, I would go to a governor and say, governor, you're not going to like what I have to say, but I think this is a bad idea. And I think you have to tell people sometimes what they don't want to hear. That's the job of being on this board. But anyway, we have, we have great people on the board right now. And, and they were appointed by you. We're not self-appointed.
Well, Larry, I, I want to just again, thank you all for, uh, putting up with all of this. I, I can't imagine sitting in your chairs. Um, and, and, you know, it's just like our, our independent auditors. Um, you know, they, they're, they're kind of like you, I'm sure. Uh, and my analogy that I like to use is I beat my head against the brass rail in the, in the gallery. Um, from, you know, from trying to get things done. And, uh, the auditors, year after year, have findings that are the same over and over again. And very little gets corrected. Um, and, and so, and I understand, maybe they're a thorn in the different agency's sides. And maybe, maybe you're the thorn, you know, in the, in the contracting, uh, side of things. But I think that it's necessary and I think that the taxpayers can benefit from that agitation or whatever. And, you know, you should be funded, uh, for everything that you need to do. So, uh, I just, I'm here to, to say that every single time that we're in audience together. So thank you so much to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions about the budget itself? Um, the money that you want, is it going to give you what you need? Any, any other questions on the financial aspects of this budget? Senator, was that waved as you're saying hi or you just, would you want to ask a question?
I had a question as well, and I'm just saying hi to everyone too. I wanted to thank you for your work and then also for your presentation. Um, I have about a hundred questions about what's going on and I have about fifty about the policies going forward, but that's, this is not the place for that. So I'll probably bug you guys offline. Um, but the question I wanted to specifically ask you from the budget perspective is, I understand that a lot of thought has gone into asking for an attorney and it almost looks like working with the AG's office isn't working out. And it's almost a little frustrating for me because I'd rather save some money rather than hire another lawyer. Uh, and it seems like when there is a, uh, a gray zone, um, you're, you're not getting the support you, you need. Um, I'm trying to figure out, is there something we can do that we don't have to get another lawyer? And, and, and use more taxpayer money? And at the same time, this is a structural issue too.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I'm, I'm with you. I, I, I started out thinking, well, as long as the AG can help us when we need a lawyer, let's go that route. Uh, but, but our experience, and, and I don't fault the AG for this because a, a, a lot of the kinds of work that we do, we'll get a complaint in. And now all of a sudden we need some legal support. It's, 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 it's not, it's, you know, some of it is writing regulations. The AG has told us they can't, they, they can't give us someone to help us do that. Uh, and a lot of it is, is if someone files a complaint, we should have a staff attorney to help advise the committee that's holding a hearing about that complaint. And, and, and since it's unplanned, I'm, I don't know, I'm sure that every state agency is, is fighting for resources and trying to plan out the work. And a lot of the work that our, that a staff attorney has that we would have with them, it comes up based upon stuff that couldn't be anticipated, but we know it's going to come up. And, and frankly, it should come up more than it does if, if, if more bidders knew about the appeal process. And, and, and so I don't see a way out of it. I, 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 I think it's, it's too hard to have an on-call support from the AG. The AG, if something very big comes up, will, will, will sometimes support us. And when we went to the AG to ask for a formal opinion about, uh, the port authority, they responded very quickly to us. So it's not that they're unresponsive, but they, they actually can't support the needs of this board, uh, which are really ongoing.
Okay. And I just want to make a comment. I mean, with the checks and balances that we want, uh, your budget, your, uh, uh, positions are in the legislator's control. So, so for, for a governor to be able to make it less relevant, uh, that's where you reach out to us. Um, and then, and, um, and then we need to make sure that we strengthen those systems because it's not a sustainable form of a government if we do that. And, and can I also, well, it's a Mr., it's the chair, it's just a small, uh, strategic question. Do you think this issue would not be as big an issue if we did not pandemic?
If we hadn't had the pandemic?
Correct. So your frustrations that you have, would they be as much as they are if there was no pandemic?
I don't, I, I don't think, I don't think the, the only way the pandemic has factored in for us, actually, in some ways, the pandemic has gotten to Zoom meetings. And, and so we've, in many ways, there's more participation from the public now because it's easier to participate. But, but, you know, as you know, when there was a health emergency, all of the procurement laws are related to, um, the emergency get suspended. And so, so, uh, which I, that's, that makes a lot of sense to us. We haven't actually looked to see whether that was done appropriately or abused, which would be an interesting thing for, for our board to ultimately look at. But we didn't want to look at it while we're in the middle of a health emergency. So, so I, I don't know whether contracting agencies, um, relaxed themselves around procurement during the, during the, um, pandemic when it wasn't related to the emergency. We did have the one situation that we all read about in the press where we were supposed to get some N, some masks delivered, some, and then the guy made a deal with somebody else, but there was no money. And, and the guy that we were dealing with had a history of apparently, uh, not always being on the full up and up. That's the kind of thing that, that, you know, why is that person being even a bidder? If they have that kind of history, that hap, but, but during a pandemic, you're trying to get stuff in, someone says they can do it. We didn't look at it. So in that sense, I think the pandemic has had some impact.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I, I appreciate your, your presentation and also your budget requests. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from committee members, subcommittee members? Any, um, additional comments on your budget request that you'd like to make before we sign off?
Uh, just, I want to reiterate that, um, it, it will be important. it will be important to look at the companion language. And I don't know if it's still Senate Bill 9. We talked about it in our written testimony. But, I know that the governor's office has a different, has, at least, OPM had an interpretation that they think we were misreading the intent of that legislation. But where it basically says that when we have an issue around procurement or contracting, we should refer it to the auditors for investigation. That would actually be the end of the ability of our board to do our job. So that language, if you want us to do the job, we don't just have a appropriation staffing problem. The legislature needs to pay attention to that language. We can work collaboratively with the auditors, right now, under the law, for E-6, I believe it is. But to require us to use the auditors for all of our investigations would end our ability in real time to try to remedy things. It would be a very bad impact.
Thank you. If there aren't any other further questions, we appreciate the information you provided us with today. And hopefully, we'll have better results this year.
We also.
When we get the money into the budget, keep it in the budget, I guess, is the point.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for taking time out, and it's always good to see Bob Reek. Alrighty.
We see him all the time.
Well, we all have our causes to bear, I guess. Take care now.
Take care.
Oh, Mr. Chair, we'll be scheduling a time for the subcommittee to get back together to review some of the requests that you've asked for today. I'll take and seize and give you some time to mull things up. So we'll be in touch regarding the follow-up meeting of the subcommittee.
Thank you.
You so much.
Good, thank you.
So, you've done excellent. Super, thank you so much.
You're welcome.